Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, February 8th City Council meeting. We're actually going to start off tonight with the public hearing for utilities. So I'm just going to quickly read the open meeting law for that. In accordance with Governor Charles D. Baker's March 10th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. This meeting is going to be held via remote video conferencing services that will air on Quincy Access Television, QA TV channel, QA TV Night, Government Access. Again, this is the public hearing that we're opening with for utilities, the grant of location from National Grid at Joyce Street, Cornell Street, Quarry Street, and Furness Brook Parkway intersect. So I'm going to open it up to folks who want to speak in either favor or against. And I would just ask that you use the raise your hand function. If you're dialing in through Zoom and want to give your comments through the public hearing process, you want to click on Participants on the bottom here, which will open up the panel participants on your right-hand side. Scroll down and use the raise your hand function. If you have the new Zoom account, you want to scroll down on the bottom, click on Reactions, and then click the Raise Your Hand function. And if you're dialing through your phone, you want to dial *9. So I'm going to open up the public hearing and keep an eye out for anybody who wants to speak in either favor or against.
Madam President, you're muted. Can't hear you.
Have I been muted this whole time?
Yes.
And no one said anything?
No, we heard the whole thing.
Okay, was it just, I was just reiterating that if, I don't see anybody raising their hand, but reiterating how they can raise their hand. So, thank you, Counsel Phelan. I see someone who's listed here as Call-In User underscore 1 raising their hand. When I unmute you, can you just state your name and address for the record? And if you're speaking in favor or against, please? Call-In User, I just need you to unmute yourself, please.
Good evening. This is Mary Mulrooney from National Grid.
Hi, Mary. We're getting an echo on our end. Can you mute the other? There you go. I think that's better.
It's not allowing me to unmute.
We can hear you on our end, but we're hearing an echo because I think you might have it pulled up on another screen or another computer.
Yes, I called in because my mute button is showing muted on the computer.
Okay, I can go ahead and unmute you. What name are you listed on?
Mulrooney M.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you so much. Sorry.
No worries. Did you want to speak on behalf of this item?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I don't see anybody from the public raising their hand. You do have until 6:35, so we've got about two minutes if you'd like to speak.
Okay, this is National Grid, and we respectfully request the city of Quincy to abandon and replace approximately 100 feet of 4-inch low-pressure bare steel with the installation of approximately 700 feet of 8-inch plastic in Joyce Road from the existing 6-inch low-plastic in Cornell Street to the existing 4-inch low-pressure cast-iron in Quarry Street. Abandon and replace approximately 130 feet of 4-inch plastic with the installation of 250 feet of 8-inch plastic in Quarry Street from the proposed 8-inch low-pressure plastic tie-in at Joyce Street in Quarry Street to the existing 6-inch plastic in Furness Brook Parkway.
Thank you so much. And I do see somebody else who has their hand raised, John Jacobic, I believe it's pronounced. If you could just state your name and address for the record, and if you're speaking in favor or against.
John Jacobic, and I'm speaking again.
Okay. Thank you, John. Did you want to say?
Yes, I just, I just want to make the comment that National Grid has done nothing but caused four problems in northern Quincy. We've had seven power failures in the last four months. And to continue building new equipment and extending when the existing infrastructure is in terrible state, this leaves me opposed to it.
Okay, thank you so much, John. I appreciate that. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor or against? I believe we're at time, but I'll take one more if there's anybody else that has their hand raised. And let me just do another check here. Okay, I don't see many else having their hand raised. So with that, I'll close the public hearing and move it over to ordinance. Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'd like to call to order the Monday, February 8th ordinance meeting. And since we already opened it up with the, with Governor Baker's, Madam President, since you already did that, I'll move on to pursuant to the open meeting law. Any person may make or make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings and transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present or are deemed acknowledged and permissible. And with that, I'd like to ask Madam Clerk if you could call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Present.
Counselor Kane.
Present.
Counselor Debona.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci.
Present.
Counselor Phelan.
Present.
Chairman Mahoney.
Present.
Nine members have a quorum.
Thank you very much. The matters before us this evening are the Counselor orders 2020-037, and that is the ordinance amending Title II of Administration and Personnel, Chapter 2.148, Job Classifications and Salaries, and adding Section 2.148.060, Advertising, Employment, and Vacancies. This was brought before the council back in February of 2020. And the goal of this was to, to really, Quincy is one of the largest cities that's not right now currently advertising any of our open space, open, open jobs or opportunities for anybody to apply to the city. And we're missing out on some great opportunities for great qualified people. And, you know, seeing that we're the, in the top 10 largest cities, we're the last one to do it. Brockton was able to do it last year in 2019 before the pandemic. I'd like to see Quincy come up to speed on that. And basically what this will do is allow all vacancies for full-time positions in the municipality and services be, be, you know, be on the line and be able to go out and, you know, if anybody wants to apply, they'll be able to see the position. And notice will be able to be done at least 30 days prior to any appointment. So positions can be viewed by the general public. And there's no better time for this to be happening, seeing everything is being done online. But that's basically the, the essence behind this, this, this ordinance. I don't know if Brian Palmucci, Counsel Palmucci would like to speak on it as well because he did co-sign on this.
Yeah, very briefly, I think, especially now, I don't even, when it was brought in, I think we were pre-pandemic, but especially in the times we're in now with so many people who have suffered economic loss as a result of COVID-19. There's more folks out there looking for jobs. And in a way, that, that could serve to benefit the city as there are more folks maybe looking to work closer to where they live, Quincy residents who may have lost their job. Incredible asset to the city and have talents for a job that they otherwise wouldn't have considered for the city. I think it, I don't see any downside to posting jobs like this on the, in an open, transparent way. So I certainly support the measure, and I encourage my colleagues to do the same. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. At this point, I'd just like to open it up to any discussion for any of the other counselors, if there's any, anybody who'd like to speak on the matter.
Counselor Andronico.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say briefly that I appreciate the work that Counselor Mahoney and Counselor Palmucci put in sponsoring this piece of legislation before us. You know, I think that, or rather, I believe that a more transparent government is better able to meet the best interests of the people of which it serves. And this ordinance that's in front of us tonight not only increases transparency, but it will also allow the city to be confident that it receives the most qualified applicants and the best available job applicants to help serve the citizens of Quincy. And I do look forward to casting an affirmative vote on this matter tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Andronico. Does anybody else want to speak on the matter of this ordinance? Counselor Phelan.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. You know, this, this doesn't sound like a bad ordinance to me. You know, I don't know if we have any power over it or anything, or in the end, it will be the mayor that will decide it. But one thing I think that's important to note, even while we're posting applications, like when you hire a police or firefighter, they're coming off a civil service test. So it's basically posted by civil service. Even if you're working for the DPW, you have to sign a civil service list ahead. So there's a lot of those that aren't going to be posted. Just some, some union positions, if it's in that union, having been a city department head, people can, who, if they're in the same union doing the same job, can bid for those jobs. So a lot of times what you end up with is sometimes at the department head level and sometimes at the entry level. And that's really what ends up getting posted. I don't see it as a, as a negative or anything like that. But I also think if people think by doing this, you're going to all of a sudden get every job in the city posted, I don't think you're going to be able to because there's different qualifications, people are hiring from different areas and coming in from different places. So like with civil service, you know, both police, fire, and DPW, and that's probably the bulk of the employees, where you would be talking about as a project manager, or positions like that that are outside, you know, appointed by the mayor's office. And that's going to be still his power. But I do, I do support the idea of posting these positions. I think anything that, that opens government is good. But I think we also have to realize that some of these positions are not going to be posted. The majority are not because that's the way the hiring system works. And a lot of that comes from the state, not from the city. So I'll support the resolution and everything here, but I think we also have to, there also has to be a little reality that we have to realize that probably 75 to 80% of these positions are not going to be posted because they're coming from state and civil service tests. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Liang.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I just want to thank both of you and Counsel Palmucci for bringing this forward and having this conversation. I appreciate Counsel Phelan's perspective on this, actually, in that it certainly gives me an additional perspective that there is more work that can continue to be done. But, you know, I always approach the thing that we shouldn't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And I appreciate that this is a really solid first step in getting us in the right direction. So I am excited to support this tonight. I appreciate both of you bringing this forward and to, you know, to us to, again, take a step in the right direction towards transparency. And, you know, once we get it up on the website and there's improvements that can be made along the way, we certainly can, and, you know, will be doing that. But the fact that we're taking the first step with the work that you put before us, I think is a really exciting thing. So I appreciate the added perspective on what we can do to improve this moving forward, and I'm happy to support it. But thank you to you both for bringing this to us.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak on, on the motion or the, on the ordinance? Counsel Palmucci?
Yeah, I was just interviewing it. I wonder if we need the 30-day time limit or requirement? And I just, I was just thinking of it in terms of the health, the Health Department Director. If we had a, if we had a good candidate, you know, say this becomes effective ordinance tomorrow, we have a good candidate that comes to the city on Wednesday. Do we really want to wait 30 days while the job is posted? I mean, assuming even if, even if a job is posted, it's posted for, you know, a week or two, and we have a candidate, would we want to wait the additional two or three weeks? I don't know. I'm just, it's, it's unusual that we would have a situation, I think, where you would need somebody immediately, but just, we currently have a vacancy in the Health Department. I wonder if, I wonder if it, if it would be just as effective if we didn't include the 30-day requirement.
I would say that you, thank you very much, Counsel Palmucci. And I'd be open to a friendly amendment to that, but I would say that you would want to have at least, if not 30 days, at least, at least a two-week period of window to be able to, fairly be able to collect, you know, people that want, want to apply for something because other than that, you'd be really, you could open and close it in a day, and it disadvantages people who may not get the chance to actually apply. And then if I could, so I'd be open to changing that if, if you would like to make a friendly amendment from 30 days to maybe, you know, 10 days or two weeks.
Sure, I would do that. I'd make a friendly amendment that it be amended to 30 days to 10 days.
10 days. Anybody else, are you all set, Counsel Palmucci?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in regards to this? And just to, to go back just in, in direct to Counsel Phelan, I did do some research on this, and I, I reached out to the Human Resources in Brockton. And I do agree that this would be something that the mayor and the administration would have to want to implement, and I would encourage that they do, mostly because I think it could go hand in hand with the, the social justice and equity that we're looking to put into play as well to make sure that we're hiring people that actually, that actually, you know, so our government can actually look like the community that we, that we, we are here to serve. But when I was speaking with Brockton, there's opportunities for, for positions such as that you said, whether it's union or civil service, that they can actually put that as a requirement. So not, the general public might not be able to apply, but they can see what positions are there. So there are, there are places within the, the top 10 states in the state of Massachusetts are actually putting those positions up, but their pre-qualifications are that you have to be on the civil service list, or you have to be a member of the union before you can, before you could qualify for that job. So there are ways to, to actually, to actually do that. But I'm, I'm not suggesting if we could get just whatever is open to be posted, that'd be a step in the right direction. I think long-term going down the road, there'll be ways that we could post those things. But I, I do, I think it's, it's fine to change it to from 30 days to 10 days as well. So is there anybody else that has any questions in regards to this? Counsel Liang.
I'd like to make a motion for a positive recommendation on this item.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion? It's hard to keep track. It's a smaller group tonight, and I can't keep track of anybody. Okay, so I don't see any discussion on the motion. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Debona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
Chairman Mahoney.
Yes.
Nine members as amended.
I want to thank everybody for that. And we're going to move on to 2020-051. This is an ordinance amending Title V Business Licenses and Regulations, adding Section 5.06 to the business certificates. And I'm going to have Nicole Crispell will be speaking on this. Nicole?
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity. I was asked by Quincy Police, by Detective Folling of the Licensing Board to add a little, another layer to the business certificates. And so I worked with him and spoke with Counsel Palmucci on this, and we came up with just adding another layer. So right now, there's already an ordinance to grant a business certificate. There's also a part of it to add a fee for that. And now we're just asking for qualification, modification, denial, or revocation. Certificates issued under this section shall be subject to qualification, modification, denial, or revocation at the discretion of the city clerk. And this has come to light over the past couple of years that if something happens at an establishment that we give a license to, and for some reason, either the police may shut the place down, or perhaps the state may shut the place down, we don't have any teeth to go in there and, and either suspend their business license or take it from the premise. So we thought this might be a good way, and, you know, through investigations of the Licensing Board, they see some things that are suspect that they're going to bring to the state, for the state to investigate. And we just wanted to be able to protect the city and take our business certificate back if need be.
Thank you, Nicole. I'm going to open it up now to see if there's any questions or comments in regards to the ordinance from my fellow colleagues. Counsel Palmucci, would you like to speak on this as well?
No, I think that, I think that about sums it up. It seems reasonable to me. I'd move approval.
Okay, so we have a motion to move approval. Any comments? Counsel Liang, did you have your hand up? Just looking for people to talk. Okay. Any, anything, anybody? Nope, not seeing anybody raising their hands. Okay. So we have a motion. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Debona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
Chairman Mahoney.
Yes.
Nine members, positive recommendation.
All right, moving on to 2020-133. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 737, 375, zoning Article 7, Special Residential Regulation 7.1, Affordable Housing, adding Section 7.1.14, definition of affordable housing. There is, there is a need for a public hearing that's required. We did not have the public hearing tonight, so this will have to come back. So we cannot vote on this tonight, but I'm going to pass this over to Counselor Palmucci if this was his ordinance that he brought in. So Counsel Palmucci?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Members of the council, I brought this in, this specific language in, or as a way to have a discussion about affordable housing in the city. I think that more and more, the lack of affordable housing is becoming a problematic issue in the city. It has been for years, but I think it's coming to, coming to a head, especially, I mean, especially in these difficult economic times. We do not have a specific definition of what, what affordable housing is. We have a, we have the affordable housing, the inclusionary zoning ordinance. And what that requires is that anybody who builds development in the city over 10 units, I think it is, has to have a minimum of 10% affordable housing in their project. So you build a 10-unit building, you have to have one unit that's affordable. We give people the option, the Affordable Housing Trust, which oversees the implementation of this. They give people the option of, and through ordinance, essentially, we do too, give people the options of, developers the option of buying out of that obligation so they can build 10 market rate apartments or units, whatever, and then pay money into the Affordable Housing Trust fund. I believe the, the going rate for a unit is somewhere around $60,000 right now. So very rarely do we have developers build affordable housing on-site, which, in my opinion, is the best possible solution. I think national studies have shown that when you segregate affordable housing and you put them in a, in a location distinct among themselves, that it doesn't have a great social impact. So what would be better is if, when we're building, you know, three, when someone's building 200 units, that there are 20 units scattered throughout the project that are affordable. Instead, what's usually happening is they're, they're paying. So they'll pay that, they'll pay $50,000 per unit into the Affordable Housing Trust fund, which is great, but we do not have the ability, the city, to put units online as quickly as developers do. So what, what's happened is the Affordable Housing Trust is, you know, it had well over $1 million recently. I know we spent a significant amount during the COVID-19 pandemic to assist people with, with rent and, and mortgage payments who were out of work or struggling. But, but nevertheless, we, I think, have an obligation to review this ordinance to better define what we consider to be affordable housing and how we want to see affordable housing put into the city. And let me just be very clear and state, affordable housing does not mean Section 8. Affordable housing does not mean housing for people who don't have jobs. These are misnomers that I think people think of, oh, affordable housing, oh, I don't want those kind of people. Affordable housing is, is not about quality or, or class of people. It's about economics. We have the, the area meeting, median area income for Quincy, it's about $65,000. So if you're a single person, single young woman, single young man, in the workplace full-time, and you make 60, less than $65,000, you, you would be in this rubric of affordable housing, qualifying for affordable housing. Right now, so what we're talking about is really, you know, Quincy housing for Quincy people. We're not talking about shipping people in to these affordable housing units from another place. We're talking about young people starting out in Quincy, born and raised in Quincy, you know, they want to come back to Quincy after college, they want to enter the workforce and live in Quincy and raise their family in Quincy like they were raised. Right now, we're, they're getting priced out of this market. We're losing talented, quality people, Quincy-born, Quincy-bred folks who are just, can't afford to live in Quincy. And additionally, you have people who are struggling with maintaining the high cost of, of living that's in Quincy and the greater Boston area. As the cost of living goes up, it becomes more and more difficult for people to economically survive in the city. And we, I would suggest that we have always been a blue-collar city. And if we don't do something to allow folks of all different economic backgrounds, a diverse economic background, to live in the city, we're not going to be a city of blue-collar workers anymore. It will be a, you know, a bedroom community for, for folks who have very high-paying jobs in the, in the city of Austin. And I don't think that's what anybody wants. We want a diverse mix of, in our population, of both racial, ethnic, and economic backgrounds. So the purpose of this really is just to, is to start the discussion because the, the federal government defines affordable housing in one way, which is what we, which is what we apply in some standards. Then the, the state of Massachusetts has a, had a program in which they came up with a term called workforce housing, in which workforce housing, you're, you're permitted to charge up to 120% of market rate rents. So if the market rate rent, which I believe right now, I looked today, the market rate rent for a two-bedroom apartment in Quincy is $2,500 per month. So if, if you built, if a developer said they're going to build affordable and they built a workplace, a work, workforce housing, they could be allowed to charge up to 120%. I don't think that's happened anywhere, and I'm not saying it is happening, but under that definition, it could happen. They could charge up to 120% of the $2,500. Better at math, I tell you what it was, but I'm on. So what I'd like to do, or what I think we should do as a council, is have a broader discussion about affordable housing and the lack thereof in the city, and what we can do as legislators and leaders in the city to encourage affordable housing, more affordable housing in the city. Specifically, how we can encourage development of affordable housing in the city. It's very rare that a developer actually builds on-site. I know the past, I don't know, five or six years, every time a developer has approached me about a project that they're, that they're building, you know, to set up a neighborhood meeting, I always encourage them to, to, to build something affordable, to build an affordable component. And, you know, they always say, well, we'll take a look at it, and they come back to me and say, we just can't make the numbers work. So our affordable, our inclusionary zoning ordinance calls for 10%. I don't know that that number is correct. I don't know if, if 10% isn't getting affordable housing built on-site, then perhaps that number shouldn't be 10%. I tend to believe in market forces, and I think that... I tend to believe in market forces, and I think that based on what we've seen, and there are very few developers in the thousands and thousands of units that have been built in the city over the last five or six years, there's been very few of those developments that have included affordable housing. So clearly it's not working. Clearly, the system and the structure that we have in place is not working, certainly not working in my opinion. Yes, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund grows, and that's great. And obviously, that's an indispensable resource for projects like the Watson, which is probably one of the better projects the city's ever seen, certainly in recent memory. And what's interesting about the Watson is that is a tiered project. So they have, I forget the numbers off the top of my head, but they have the bulk market rate. So there are people paying full freight to live there. Then they have workforce housing, which is people who can afford a little bit more but can't afford the market rate. Again, you're basing it off the $65,000 a year, which is, by the way, our starting salary for a teacher in the city of Quincy. You're talking about regular folks. We're not talking about poor people without jobs. Like, that's not what we're talking about here. And then in the Watson, they also have affordable. So they have all three spectrums of housing, which is great. I mean, that's what you want. And they all in the same building, coexisting, it's a great, great project. And that, the Affordable Housing Trust played a key role in that, and they did a wonderful job in helping fund that. But there aren't as many Watson projects as I think this city needs and the residents need in order to meet our obligation to young people and to folks who are working full-time and struggling with the rising cost of living in the greater Boston area. So I don't know what the solution is. I really don't. And I'm not suggesting that this is the solution. This was more of a vehicle to start the conversation. I'd love to work with all of my colleagues, any of you, all of you, as well as the Planning Department, to try and figure something out that works for folks. Like I said, I've brought it up to just about every developer who's had something to do with West Quincy, South Quincy in the last five or six years. I've said, you tell me what the number is. You tell me what percentage of affordable housing could you actually afford to build onsite? And it's not 10%, that's for sure. So I think we need to find a better, a better way of doing things. Again, I don't purport to have that better way, but I think us working together, we can certainly find something that does a better job in terms of affordable housing. Luckily, I was done. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Pelmucci. Would anybody else like to speak in regards to? We will be having a follow-up meeting, but I just wanted to see if anybody else wanted to speak in regards to affordable housing tonight. Okay, I don't see anybody. What I would like to say also is, I spoke at length today with Mr. Batsys, and I do think a presentation would be very helpful, not only for the council, but also for the general public to understand. And a public hearing is definitely going to be very helpful because I think we're going to hear from a lot of people who do feel the strain that's happening here in Quincy. It's not just the young people. It sometimes is the seniors who are also looking for that ability to stay in the city, who may be being priced out in other ways. So it's important that we have these types of dialogues, especially prior to the URDP for Wallaston to come before us in ordinance, because there's incentives that are given to developers as well, and we have to make sure that there's a balance for our community so that we're able to, you know, let people who want to live here in Quincy live here, all different economic backgrounds, be able to be here, because that is what makes Quincy special. So with that, I'm going to be keeping this in ordinance, and I'm going to ask, Jomanning, if we could make at the next council meeting, March 1st, a public hearing for ordinance 2020-133 and a presentation from the Planning Department, and I will follow up with Mr. Batsys on that. Well, that completes what we've had on the agenda for this evening. So at this point, I'd like to, I'm going to be closing the ordinance meeting at 7:04. And we'll take two of them out of ordinance, we'll take out tonight, and we'll leave this one in, and so we'll be closing it. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. So the regularly scheduled council meeting is scheduled to start at 7:30 PM. This is the Monday, February 8, 2021 City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counselor Andronico.
Present.
Counselor Debona.
Present.
I'm also present, thank you.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counsel Mahoney.
Present.
Counsel McCarthy.
Present.
Counsel Pelmucci. Counsel Famon.
Present.
President Liang.
Present.
Eight members who have a quorum.
Thank you. Everyone can just mute themselves so we can take a moment of silence in honor of all of the women and men serving both here and abroad, and also again, keeping in mind all of our first responders who are still fighting on the front lines of the pandemic. Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you read the open meeting law, please?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and deemed acknowledged impermissible.
Thank you. And in accordance with Governor Charles D. Baker's March 10, 2020, orders suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, this Quincy City Council meeting is being held via remote radio conferencing services and is being aired on Quincy Access Television, QATV9 Government Access. Madam Clerk, a first item on the agenda, please.
Number one is honoring of the COVID-19 heroes Germantown Community Center.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, President Liang. I know over the past several weeks, we were bringing in different departments and different organizations, and we would be remiss if we excluded the Germantown Neighborhood Center. I've been involved with items down in Ward 1 for many years, the years I had on the school committee. I was involved with the Germantown Neighborhood Center the last three years, involved with them again. And the folks down there, even before the pandemic, they would step up, they would take charge, they would proactively get involved in any type of crisis. The floods a few years ago, they worked closely with me at Christmas time. They were always open to making sure that the neighbors down in Germantown got what they deserved through working with State Street, Meditech, and other companies. But what they did in 2020 and what they continue to do in 2021 with the pandemic was up and beyond the call of duty. I've got a few stats, and then I'll turn it over to Paul Gorman, who runs the South Shore Y. But just a couple of things here, and I'm always amazed that when people put together the statistics. But they had line after line down there with the food pantry. And from March 20 to December 2020, March 2020 to December 2020, they served over 500,000 pounds of food and 53,000, over 53,000 meals to thousands of children's families and individuals who found themselves out of work and in trouble. And the folks that are on tonight, if their office was up at the Y at Quincy Center, when that pandemic hit, I watched them transform, and they were all in the Germantown Neighborhood Center. As the notes indicate to me, all hands were on deck. So it's my pleasure and my honor to always tip my hat to the Germantown Neighborhood Center and to Paul Gorman and Patrick Murphy and company. So I'll turn it over to Paul Gorman for a few words, but they're always there, they're always thinking of the community, and they're always thinking of Germantown. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Paul, I'd like to turn it over to you, and I'm just going to unmute you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. The Germantown Neighborhood Center and the city have had a long relationship, successful relationship, serving that community. And this year was a challenge in so many different ways. One, as far as the Y as a whole, which includes the Neighborhood Center, we were forced to close down our regular operations for just about four months. We had to furlough almost 900 folks during most of that time, and the staff that were left were about 55 of us. And all 55 were involved in Germantown at that time, from our resident camp staff that were still down there, including our cook, who also cooked meals. We had a big commercial kitchen that we cooked meals, not only for the folks in Germantown, but for the, some of the senior housing around the city, to our development staff, Kathy Quigley, who everyone knows, and Mary Orne, to fundraise, to work with our restaurants throughout the South Shore that have supported us in the past, where we would fundraise and support them to provide not only the basic food that was coming into the food pantry, but these special meals that they come on their own to deliver, special meals, first-class meals down in Germantown to the homeless shelter that we had at the Y. All of our, from myself to Trevor, our COO, our administrative staff pivoted from their regular jobs to be down in Germantown, where the need quadrupled during that time. And I'm so proud of our staff that dropped everything and saw the need. Here in Quincy, not only we're working with Germantown Neighborhood folks, the seniors and senior housing, we have an emergency childcare center. We had two centers in Quincy, and we were working with Father Bills and the mayor turned our Quincy Y into a homeless shelter. As you know, usually the homeless shelters invite folks in in the evenings, about 7 o'clock or as it gets dark in the evening, and then they go out back into the community during the day. Well, during this time, in order not to spread this pandemic, they were in our Y 24/7 during that time for three months, in our fieldhouse, in our nice beautiful locker rooms or our hall, really try to welcome them as our guests during that time. We helped staff that as well, and we cleaned every single night behind them to ensure the safety for all folks, whether it was the homeless folks and then, of course, down in Germantown. The efforts during this time were the whole South Shore Y and its donors, its donor base. We worked closely with the city, and the city also helped provide some funds to support the homeless shelter with the Y and down the food pantry. We worked very closely with the Greater Boston Food Bank, a great partner, Trader Joe's and the other supermarkets in the area to provide that extra food. And whatever wasn't provided, because sometimes the demand in all the communities around was so great, we had to go buy and purchase a lot of the staples. And those funds were also provided by our donors. And as Counsel McCarthy had also said, as we moved into the fall, this has not stopped. A lot of our staff are over there and still doing their other work at the Y as we reopened during the summer. We didn't skip a beat with the holiday assistance program for our toys and meals through Thanksgiving and Christmas. So we are very fortunate to be part of this great community of Quincy, to see what they do, not only to support agencies like us to facilitate the work in the community, but to see what they do for all their residents during this time. We're just very happy that we can be a part of that and help with the community.
Thank you so much, Paul. I do want to turn it over to any of my colleagues if they'd like to say a few words. Counsel Debona?
Thank you, Madam President. Paul, good to see you tonight. Good to see a couple other ones on there, Patrick, Kathy, Phil, Mary. Thank you for all your dedication, commitment, and hard work to the community, the families and children, people in need with the food pantry and the meals. Great partnership with the city of Quincy. You know, I know during this COVID-19 pandemic, you guys have stepped up and been a great partnership, as well as for Father Bills and housing folks that are inside the YMCA, which was a huge asset for us and the citizens of the city. You know, anytime I'm thinking about somebody that wants to give away things, especially during the holidays, I know last year I had a partnership with a couple constituents that wanted to give away some extra Easter baskets. And the first person I always think of is Kathy Quigley down at the Germantown Neighborhood Center. So we hooked up and got about 50 Easter baskets for some kids during the, around the April time, you know. So anytime that somebody wants to give away things, I'm thinking of you guys. I know the partnership with the YMCA, Germantown Neighborhood Center has been a great asset to the city. Looking forward to the future, but I want to thank you for all your hard work. I know I visited a couple times with the food pantry this year, and I looked over at Kathy and I says, wow, there is quite a big, it's a big line out there. She goes, we've never had it like this before. This is a huge need in 2020, so I want to thank you for everything. And she was out there giving away the food right in the front of the line with everybody else. So I thank you guys, Patrick, Paul, Kathy, Phil, Mary, and all the Germantown Neighborhood Center staff and everybody at the YMCA. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Let me just do another quick look and see if anybody else would like to speak. Counsel Mahoney?
I do just want to say thank you. I mean, when it comes to the YMCA and the team spirit that you have with the city, it's never gone unnoticed. But with the pandemic and everything that everybody's been challenged with and the need of our residents, especially down there in Germantown, and I know there's a huge need, there's a huge need before we had a pandemic and the Y was stepping up. So I just want to make sure that you all know how valued you are in our community. And it was really a percolating experience when you really look back at what was able to be accomplished in the early months of the pandemic by being able to open up the YMCA and really giving our Father Bills and the homeless population a place to go that could keep them safe as well. So I do think that sometimes these things, they just happen. They don't just happen. They happen with a lot of coordination and a lot of effort and a lot of minds at the table that are trying to make things better for the people in the city of Quincy and make it safe. And I just wanted to make sure you all knew how much I appreciated that. So thank you very much for all that you do and you continue to do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, anybody else wishing to speak? All right, great. With that, I just want to also say a quick few words. Counsel McCarthy, thank you so much for bringing them to us to have the opportunity to formally thank them as well. You know, obviously, the main location in Quincy Center did so much work in serving the community at large throughout the pandemic and just thinking quickly on its feet. But specifically in honoring the Germantown Neighborhood Center, you know, as someone who's from Cordycek Road over there myself, I'm just so grateful to each of you for your continued efforts in programming, you know, every year, in and out, as well as continuing those services through the pandemic. A lot of families down there need this resource, a lot of the kids down there need this resource. And Phil, you know, your work with the youth there, I mean, it's exceptional and it's such an incredible resource to that neighborhood and frankly, to the city. So Phil, to you and your efforts, everyone's team over there at Germantown Neighborhood Center. I know Kim Driscoll, you know, works with the food bank down there, and there's so many volunteers that continue to commit their time. It's such a huge family over there at the Y, and I'm just so grateful to all of you for your continued efforts in continuing the services here in the city. So thank you all so much, Counsel McCarthy. Thank you so much again for bringing them to us tonight, and please stay safe, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Number one on the agenda, COVID-19 vaccine update.
Thank you. I, you know, it's funny, I called Mr. Walker one day, and he said he was over at one of the centers trying to do everything he can to be all hands on deck with administering the vaccine. And I just think that with everything that's been going on, both federally and on a state level, it's really important to acknowledge the work that has been done here in the it's really important to acknowledge the work that has been done here in the city to quickly pivot and make sure that we can set up the best, you know, systems as possible. Again, with very little, you know, guidance from anywhere. And so I know a lot of people are eager to hear what's been going on. And again, Mr. Walker, I just know that you've been all hands on deck with a number of folks to get the city's services up and running on this. So thank you so much for coming here tonight with this information, and I will turn it over to you for an update.
Brilliant, Madam President. Thank you very much. If I could, just very quickly add, relative to the South Shore YMCA, you folks all mentioned their role in setting up the satellite shelter for Father Bill's place. And I just want to reiterate that when this all broke early in the spring, as the pandemic was taking hold, it was literally one phone call from the mayor to Mr. Gorman. Mayor said, Paul, you know, we're in some trouble here. We have a real issue. We need to do something with this incredibly vulnerable population. And there was no hesitation, no hemming, no harring, no anything. The words were literally, what do you need and when do you need it? And with that, we were off and running with the program at the South Shore Y. And, you know, based on our conversations with some of the professionals in the field, including our old friend Joe Finn, we really put ourselves in a position that potentially saved many, many lives by doing what we did together to help that population. And I would be remiss if on the mayor's behalf, I didn't publicly thank Paul and the whole team from the South Shore Y for what it did. It can't be underestimated how important that effort was in the early steps of the pandemic. And that sort of attitude has sort of played into our vaccine planning. As everyone in this body knows, our work on this pandemic, from a clinical perspective, begins and ends with our partnership with Manette Community Health. And that's where we sort of started with our vaccine planning. And that's where we're continuing today. And I think that partnership continues to provide incredible benefit to the city and the community members. As we know, early December or so, we opened with Manette, of course, a weekly testing clinic at 180 Old Colony Ave., which this body last year approved the purchase of to eventually become the home of the Christopher Early Learning Center. That construction isn't scheduled to begin until later this spring slash summer. So we have that available space, and we immediately got up and running with Manette and the testing center. And I think once everyone got in the building and took a look around that one day a week, and they sort of said, you know, it's not going to be too long, and so we're going to be talking about vaccination clinics. And that discussion sort of took off from there. You know, the partnership that we have with Manette on things like these, it really is beneficial because it breaks down in a couple of different ways. Manette brings the clinical and operational, from a medical perspective, expertise. And the city provides logistics, the building, the real estate, and the funding when necessary. So there was no difference here when we started talking about 180 Old Colony Ave. as a vaccination clinic. Our team, behind Helen Murphy and the mayor's office, got out there with the Manette team, figured out what needed to be done. We had our folks from public buildings, our folks from DPW, our folks from police, our folks from TPAL, our folks from fire department out there assessing the situation, what needed to be done. And literally, within a few days, the place was transformed into a fairly substantial vaccination clinic. We got up and running with Manette last week for Phase Two. As I think we've discussed previously, Phase One, Manette also partnered with the city. We were among the first in the state to be able to get shots in the arms of our first responders, thanks to our partnership with Manette. That process is continuing now as our first responders go back for their second shot. We did open Phase Two with Manette last week at 180 Old Colony Ave. And that was preceded or simultaneously, the city through the mayor. And again, the mayor's general sense on what it comes to is find the resources, dedicate the resources, and do whatever we can to provide as much resource and as much assistance as we possibly can. And that goes for the early stages of the pandemic with the Y and some of the other things we were doing, testing, providing assistance, housing assistance, providing financial assistance for small business owners. The mayor's made it very clear that we're going to leave no resource unused, nothing on the table. He wants to hear from folks of what the city can be doing, his team, and what the city can be doing, what we should be doing, and take that to the street level and make it happen for our community. So with that, it was the discussions we're on with Manette, we opened last week. And that, at the same time, we opened the call center, knowing that the folks that were going to be in the very first step of Phase One are folks that perhaps were not going to be able to navigate through either the state web portal to book vaccine appointments or any other web portal that was available to book vaccine appointments. So last week, we opened the call center and were able to walk through a number of people right off the bat into the appointment process with Manette. Last week, Manette, in the city's operation, administered more than 500 vaccination shots. About 300 of those were for first dose, members of the community. We can clearly do more, and we're going to be doing more. Today alone, we had 300 doses administered of members of the community. The way it's generally working right now is Monday and Wednesday, our first dose clinics. Tuesday, we're still setting aside as Testing Day at 180. With that program, it's been incredibly successful. We're averaging well over 200, 250, 300 folks a week still coming to the testing facility. So Tuesday is going to remain Testing Day. Thursday and Friday, as it stands right now, are second dose days for Manette, both for its patients, our first responders now, and then as we get into the Phase Two Step One vaccination program, those will be dose two. As I mentioned, we're up to 300 appointments today. There'll be a similar amount on Wednesday. And we are looking to continue to expand this operation. As I think I've talked directly with all of you, our issue right now is not staffing up, not scaling up, not operational. We can provide the resources. We have a number of firefighters that have been working at the Manette clinic as observation folks, making sure people have their 15 minutes before they leave the facility. We have available nurses in our school department. We have volunteers. Some of those have already, some of those folks have already gotten in touch with Manette and working for Manette. We have the resources to staff up. Right now, the issue, and it's getting better every day, is supply. Demand is, continues to follow, strip supply right now. That's to be expected. I don't think that should really surprise anyone. But that's going to continue to get better. The second component of our vaccination effort involves a partnership with the Professional Firefighters Association of Massachusetts, Brewster Ambulance, the Quincy Fire Department, and Mascon Medical. It's a logistics firm. They've come up with a pilot program that we were among the first to partner with them on to get into some of our senior buildings, get into senior buildings, and do onsite mobile vaccination clinics. This past Friday, the team from PFFM, Brewster, and Mascon in the city of Quincy, were at 125 Granite Street, where 600 doses were administered to the residents of that building and the associated buildings in that real estate group. We expect that that program is going to grow within the next week. I can't say which building it's going to next. It's not quite confirmed yet. But one of the larger facilities in the city of Quincy is on the table. And we expect that program to continue to grow and hopefully take care of some more of our senior buildings in the city. Again, as we've discussed, we advise folks when they call, when they're registering with us, through either the preregistration or the actual appointment process, is to not put all the eggs in one basket. We're continuing to see an expansion of opportunity, particularly when it comes now to the private providers. The private providers are starting to get a good amount of doses. So we're seeing some of those agencies come through with major clinics. Beth Israel Milton, the Leahy Health Beth Israel Group, has opened a vaccine clinic for its patients in North Quincy. The other big providers are all scoping real estate or have real estate reserved in the city for major vaccination clinics for their patients. So this is only going to continue to get better as we go on, and it's only going to become more available as we go on. Right now, we've sort of likened it to the train just getting out of the station. It's going to take a while for the speed to pick up, but we are going to get there. There's going to be plenty of opportunity for people to get vaccinations. And, you know, we're certainly making progress on a daily basis. As for the city's operation, we know that 180 Old Colony Ave. is not going to be the end-all and be-all right now. We're exploring other larger facilities around the city for when we get to Phase Two Steps Two, Three, and Four, and Phase Three, which is the general public. You know, ultimately, 180 Old Colony Ave., there is going to be some construction that goes on there. So we know at some point later in the spring, summer, we're going to have to have maybe multiple facilities. But that planning is going on right now. I think I've just about covered it, folks. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. I appreciate that. I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues for any questions they might have. Counsel Phelan?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Chris Walker. A question I have is, I've got calls from a couple of people. When people receive the vaccine, sometimes they get sick. Is there any follow-up with them, people afterwards? Or is that, it might not be a great question.
Counsel, that's a question I would refer to our clinical partners.
Another question I have was, I've had some people ask if they could volunteer. They're retired professional people who are around and have asked the question. They'd like to see if they need volunteers, if you want to volunteer, help with the phones and stuff. Who would they, who would they call?
Absolutely, Counsel. If you want to give me those names, I can certainly get them over to Manette right away.
Okay. All right, I will. Thank you. Looking forward to when I can get the vaccine, so.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Mahoney?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Mr. Walker, could you, I know that, I think it's very hard what's being, what's being asked of everybody. And I think, you know, we are doing a great job. I know when you, when we first established the, you know, signing up online and on the phones, you did have some system issues. How long did that happen for? And I know it's been resolved. If you could just touch upon that?
Yeah, we, there's some debate over as to whether it was an outside issue or if it was we actually crashed the system with the volume of calls. I'm going to, my benefit of the doubt is that we probably crashed the system based upon the volume of calls. That lasted for a few hours on Tuesday morning. We'll pack up later Tuesday afternoon. At that point, we had booked all the available appointments. By that, by the time that happened, all the appointments were booked. So we had, we were transferring into the pre-application, preregistration process by that point.
Okay. And how does it work now? Are you still having, is it still that you have to be, you know, I think when you would go on and say, come back tomorrow morning at 7 o'clock. Is it still the same type of thing, or is it a rolling application at this point?
It's, we're taking, we're, the phone center is still manned, staffed. And they're doing a terrific job. These are, for the most part, recreation department employees who would be spending these months doing some programming at some of our schools and some of the other programs, and they are unfortunately, they weren't working. So they were more than happy to come back. These are the higher level of the rec staff, the more experienced folks who have some absolutely great phone etiquette. I was in the phone center for quite some time, and the mayor's direction was treat everyone like it was your very own relative, your very own grandmother, your very own grandfather, and walk them through every step of the way. And these young people have just done a really remarkable job. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Michelle Hanley from the rec department and Dave Commissioner Murphy for pulling this all together. They've just done a tremendous job. So we're taking information that we're still, we're going to operate that as long as we need to operate it. My sense is we'll operate it through Step Two and Step Three and probably Phase Three. We're splitting the duties in terms of when appointments become available and people don't have access to the actual registration portal at Manette. We can walk them through that process. That was the, that was the point of setting up the center to begin with, is we can actually do the registration form. The Manette registration is a lot simpler than the state process right now. And that's part of the reason why we've gone in the direction of having our own partnership and not necessarily getting in the state portal, although we may end up there eventually as well. So when appointments become available, we have the list that we're working down on our end, and we're calling those people back and booking those appointments.
Do you know, and I really do appreciate the fact that you're able to share that with us, that it's, you know, it's multiple departments. It's really is a coordination of everybody's efforts. So I do appreciate that, and I wanted to make sure that everybody gets recognized for it. Do you know if in the future, will they be having, like they did with the COVID testing, eventually it went out to like CVSs and Walgreens? Will they be doing, will they be getting the testing eventually?
Yeah, the federal government, I believe I read something late last week, Counselor, that they're expanding the vaccine contracts with the major pharmacies, that there was a large supply that has made its way to both CVS and Walgreens. I don't know specifically. I haven't heard yet about what actual the brick and mortar stores in Quincy are doing right now. I, my understanding is, and we're working through this, that they're going to be part of the solution when it comes to Quincy Housing Authority, together with Manette and together with the city of Quincy as well. But the pharmacies, from day one, were always expected to be a big piece of this. I think it was, again, a supply issue to start, that perhaps not a lot, we weren't seeing a lot locally, but I think we're starting to see that rev up as well.
And do you coordinate with them? And when, is the brick and mortars, are you able to, and if we know that they're happening here in Quincy, kind of also direct our residents to be able to go both to Manette and when that does happen? I just want to make sure, because I realize that right now, it's, 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 there's a lot, there's a lot to it. So I do want to thank you very much, but also make sure that we're constantly updating, especially considering, you know, we don't have a commissioner health. And I know that the department is working, and I'm sure you're stepping in, Chris, but it is, it's a critical element, as I said before, in communities because of the pandemic. I mean, never before has it been such an important, important asset. And it's, it just, in some ways, makes it very difficult because there's so many different areas of the city that's pulling at that department and needs attention, which means probably you're being pulled in every direction too. So thank you.
Just to add to that, Counsel, that one of the benefits of partnership with Manette is Manette's mission. And its mission in the first place is to, is to find those vulnerable populations and help serve those disadvantaged populations. So by the very virtue of us partnering with Manette on these sorts of things, that the city is, in essence, doing that and getting to the places where we know we would need to be the most urgently anyways, because that's what Manette does on a day-to-day basis.
Oh, I agree. Yeah, and by no means, the valuable relationship that we have with Manette does not go unrecognized. I just mean in the sense that the city has to manage so many different other assets when it comes to the pandemic, whether it's the schools or, you know, even the departments, you know, the police and the fire department, everybody who's put out there in the first, their first responders, making sure that they're all being protected and taken care of, and we're moving through this as best we can. So I do thank you very much. I do, like I said, it is no easy task and certainly not one that any of us were, we're all still working through it and trying to, trying to see the light at the end of the tunnel. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions from my fellow colleagues? Okay, I just have one for you, Chris, if that's okay. Is, I know that you have the form translated in Chinese and Vietnamese, but do you have translation services readily available if somebody calls into the call number and, you know, has limited English proficiency?
Yes. Through you, Madam President. Thank you for your help on the translation on the form. And yes, we do. We do have a separate phone number where we can get people in touch with the appropriate language. And we also have some language capability from some of our rec kids that have been staffing the, staffing the call center.
Okay. And then just let, sorry, just one last question then. So logistically speaking, if I'm somebody who, you know, lives in the city and received a letter from a PCP or whatever it may be, that, you know, you're part of the phases now that make you eligible to get a vaccine, what is the best next step for them to move forward in getting schedules?
Sure. I would reach out if you're capable. I would register on the city's registration form, but also reach back out to that PCP. If it's not included in the letter, what the PCP's plans are. They could be a major provider, and if they're a major provider, there's a good chance that if they don't already, they're just waiting for the green light relative to supply, to have a fully implemented vaccine plan. light relative to supply, to have a fully implemented vaccine plan in place as well. Those are the two things that that's been our message to folks when they call, is certainly don't put all of your eggs. We're happy to, we want to vaccinate, as the mayor said, we want to vaccinate as many people in this community as we possibly can. We have growth potential. We're going to do that. But by the same token, there are going to be other opportunities for folks who want to make sure that they avail themselves of those opportunities. In your PCP or whoever your provider is, is a good place to start.
Great. So calling primary care doctors, your insurance provider, or the city's hotline, or going onto the city's website with the form are the three options for residents.
Yeah, and our folks, through you, Madam President, our folks can walk folks through the state process as well. If you want to get an appointment at Gillette or Fenway Park, which is where I plan to get mine eventually, you know, we can help with that as well.
Great. Sounds good. I'm just going to do one last call to all of my colleagues, if anybody has another last questions for you. Okay, I don't see any. Mr. Walker, thank you so much again. Please extend our gratitude to the team over at Manette, as well as the city staff over there. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Next item on the agenda is number two, 2021-018, an appropriation for $120 million for Public Safety Headquarters Phase Three Construction in Area Transportation Improvements.
Motion to move into Finance, if I could.
Okay, I have a motion to move this to Finance. Do we have a second?
Second, Michael Harris.
Second by Counselor Harris. Okay, is there any, I know, Mr. Walker, did you have anything that you wanted to just touch on before? I know we're going to have, obviously, a very in-depth conversation in Finance Committee, but I think that there were some things you wanted to touch on as well before we move it, correct?
Through you, Madam President. We look forward to making the full presentation at the Finance Committee, and certainly if there are any preliminary questions that folks have, we can answer that here.
Okay, sounds good. So we do have a motion to move this to Finance for a full discussion, including an upcoming presentation with the second by Counselor Harris. Any questions on this item before we move it? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so we're moving this to Finance. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda.
Number three, 2021-019, an order adoption of the 2021 political calendar.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, comments, or motions on this item?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Harris. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Phelan. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBarna.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is number four, 2021-020, order call of election, Tuesday, September 14th, 2021, and Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021.
Okay. We have a motion to approve by Counselor Palmucci. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Harris. Any questions or comments? Yes, Counselor Phelan.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to the city clerk, Nicole. You know, we got it on September 14th and November 2nd. Is there going to be any, I don't know what we're going to be with the pandemic or anything like that. Are we going to extend how we did with the absentee ballots for this election?
Thank you, Counselor. Through you, Madam President. I believe that we are. We're in talks now with the state of having early voting be a permanent thing going forward in the future.
Yeah, I found that to be extremely helpful. Everyone I talked to, a lot of people enjoyed that voting ahead of time, and I think it was, it also helped with the turnout, particularly in, sometimes the oral years, these can be low turnout. So this would help people to make them put out, so make them vote and stuff. And I think that that would be, it's benefits us all the more people go out and vote. So, yeah, I would strongly support that we do the absentees like we did in the last election. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBarna.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you. Number five, please, Madam Clerk.
Number five, 2021-021, resolve getting our students back on track, Counselor Kane.
Thank you, Counselor Kane.
Thank you, Madam President. So this resolution speaks for itself, but in sum, it's an expression of support for our students, our families, and for our teachers. Over the course of last year, I've heard from parents who want their children back to school. I've heard from teachers who want to be back in school with their students. And now, from what it seems, we're finally at a place where the fog is clearing. And of course, safety is paramount, which is why teachers need to get bumped up on the priority list for COVID vaccinations. There's no doubt that, given these extraordinary circumstances, QPS has done everything within their control to ensure the most relative continuity of education for students. It's also a wonderful thing that we're on track to get our first through third graders back to school on a more regular basis, starting the week of February 22. I have a lot of educators in my family. My dad teaches at a Catholic school in Dorchester, where he continues to teach in person each day. My mother's a paraprofessional in Milton, where she's in person every day. I've got other families that are teachers, principals, counselors, who all dearly miss daily interactions with their students and similarly struggle with online education. While we have seen many residents suffering to make basic ends meet during the pandemic, some of our residents are suffering because their daily educational lives have been totally disrupted. As many know, the schools are not only a place where our young people are educated with books and by teachers, but they also learn about each other and engage in information sharing that is vital for social humans. I've heard and personally seen young people struggle with online learning. They struggle not having social aspects of school, and families are now coping with growing mental health issues. That is, if you're so fortunate to have a family that is available and supportive. In these struggles, this suffering belongs to all of us. Equity has been a term that I've been hearing a lot about lately. But the delivery of educational equity is of utmost importance to our lower income and our non-primary English language-speaking students and families. Education is the foundational piece of potential upward mobility and potential economic success. If traditional education and access to that education is unavailable, none of us is living up to our capabilities as leaders, nor are we living to our call to action for the sake of equity and so-called fairness. We're at risk of writing off an entire school year and jeopardizing the educational futures of an entire population of people. While we have no idea what the pandemic's effects on this situation will be, we're certainly in a position to make it better with big ideas and swift moves. There's absolutely no doubt that the entire QPS system has done its very best to maintain any semblance of normalcy for the students of the city, given the circumstances at play. However, now is the time to take bold action so we can get our students back on track. As I previously stated, this resolution is an expression of support for our students, our teachers, and our families. It calls for our support in getting our students and teachers back into the classroom with the utmost safety in mind and for the sake of restoring a semblance of normalcy to their lives. Without doubt, teachers need to be provided the vaccine as soon as possible so that they can be alleviated of an additional burden and to reunite them with the students about whom they care very much. The pandemic has been an ordeal for everyone in personal and professional ways. Lives have been dramatically altered. But today, I want to show our students, our families, and our teachers that the city council is behind them 100% to provide them with whatever resources they need to get our envied school system back on track. On that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Counselor. So we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Harris. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, Counsel. I'd actually like to just say a few words before we move this to a vote, and I just wanted to thank you for your consideration in, you know, really bringing this to the forefront of the city council's conversation. You know, in this last year in the pandemic, we've done a lot around, you know, the fiscal responsibility here in the city, with trying to do what we can to support our constituents with constituent services, and, you know, to have a show of expression that we want to do what we can and our part, in our role here, to support the efforts that has been happening citywide with the school committee and those in QPS to get our students and our teachers back in school safely. I just think is a tremendous opportunity for us to be a part of that. And so I want to thank you for that. You know, I've had the opportunity, luckily or unluckily, to help a few folks with kids who are doing remote learning for kindergarten, first grade, third grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, and that's with, you know, full English-speaking, you know, multiple adults in the room, right, managing the Zoom space. And even then, it's an incredible challenge, right, with, again, two or three functioning adults full-time on this Zoom, trying to get them set up and, or whatever, you know, social platform they have to do this kind of learning. And I just, I get flustered with it, you know, and trying to walk the kids through this process. And I constantly think, you know, what would have happened if this was me in first grade or third grade or sixth grade or seventh grade, and trying to, you know, rely on my parents to get me set up on this piece of technology and understanding, you know, again, with limited English proficiency, what they're supposed to be doing, checking those emails, right, checking those links and checking those schedules. And I think about that impact, and I'm so, so happy and thrilled that I didn't have to do that when I was in school. But you're absolutely right. There's so much inequity, I think, for a lot of those families across the city who do have limited English proficiency, right, and are struggling with trying to make sure that they can support their kids. And I just can't imagine that feeling for those parents. And so, again, I just want to thank you for putting this in front of us to make sure that it's a priority for us as well, to do what we can to support that effort. And with that, I know we have a vote, but I do also now see a couple of hands raised. So I'm going to go to Counselor Palmucci first, and then Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Palmucci.
Thank you. Yeah, I was surprised when I saw this resolution. I just, my first concern is that we don't, we don't set policy for the schools. The school committee has jurisdiction to do that. Under state statute, they set the policy for the school. We don't, we don't set policies for the school. So I'd be happy to support something that explored budgetary issues related to, to the pandemic and our educational offerings, but I certainly don't support something that makes a recommendation to the school committee. That's 100% in their purview. And I think it's a kind of a breach of etiquette as well, that the city councils asked, or the city council would offer an opinion on the school committee and the business that they're conducting. Everybody wants the kids back in school. It's better for the kids, it's better for the parents, it's better for everybody. We all want normalcy. But you can't just say we want it, and it happens, and it happens safely. We're still in the middle of a pandemic. Our teachers haven't been vaccinated. We are, we have the responsibilities of an employer here, because it's the city. And I'm not comfortable asking people to go back to work before they're vaccinated. Now, if a teacher is not comfortable going back to work, they don't have the option to opt out. And that causes me great concern. I mean, some of the, some of the statements of facts in this resolution just don't strike true to me. Saying that the schools have lower rates of transmission, I mean, that's, that's unfounded, that schools are not doing the same amount of testing as other places are. Kids are not getting tested on a weekly basis. Kids are not getting tested on a frequent basis. So, and they're asymptomatic. Children have a higher rate of asymptomatic infections than do adults. So to say that because a child, they're not getting tested, so we don't know what the transmission rates are on a regular basis, and if they're asymptomatic, it means they could be exchanging and spreading the virus and then just bringing it home. While everything looks fine in the classroom, people at home are getting sick. So until people are vaccinated, until we have, at the very least, all of our educators vaccinated, we shouldn't even, in my opinion. And again, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say this other than, in my official capacity, I wouldn't say this other than my personal opinion to the school committee. I certainly wouldn't say it as in an official capacity that we interject in any of their policy. But I would say, at the very least, we have to wait until teachers get vaccinated before we even talk about getting back into the classroom. I just, I mean, some of the things that aren't contemplated in this, in this resolution, so are we talking about returning them, returning kids to classrooms? Because I don't know that we have the space to do that. I'm also concerned about the difference between three feet of separation and six feet of separation. Three feet of separation is not based on any scientific principle. It's based on space capacities in school buildings. Six feet separation is based on scientific research, and that's the distance that needs to be spread. If we go back to school, what we'd likely go back to is three feet separation. I'm not comfortable with that. And I'm not comfortable supporting a resolution that suggests everyone needs to do that. The 52% of families in Quincy are electing to be remote by choice. 52% of families, of students in Quincy and their families are electing to be remote by choice. So I don't think that this is a universal sentiment that everyone needs to go back to the classroom. We need to have a hybrid model until we're through the end of this pandemic and we have it under control. It is not under control. You heard from Mr. Walker tonight, that we have hundreds of people who are pre-registering and waiting for vaccinations in our city. Until that number goes down, you can get a vaccine when you need one, we shouldn't be having this conversation. It's about people's safety. This is life or death. It's not politics. I mean, I just, it really baffles me. And I just, I would never vote on something like, well, I'm going to vote on a term, but no. But I would never vote to support something like this anyways without having a conversation with stakeholders. I mean, where's the discussion with the Quincy Education Association, the Public Health Department in the school committee, parents and students? I mean, this is a broader, this isn't something you just throw in as a resolution and, you know, let it fly. This is a broader community conversation. It's got to be transparency to a process like this. And the school committee have been engaging in this process. It's not as if, you know, I want to make sure the public knows that it's not as if the school committee is not working on this issue, that they're not thinking about it, and they're not preparing and moving in the direction of returning kids to school. It's just that they haven't, they haven't reached a point where they're comfortable with the safety issues yet. So I think we're best to leave this to the school committee. There are, and there are five members of this city council, as I was thinking about to say, there are five members of this city council who served on school committees. And I know personally how I would feel if I saw a resolution from a city council telling me what to do if I was on the school committee, and it wouldn't be a good reaction. So I think we really need to put people's safety first, you know, above all else. Safety of the students, safety of the educators. And until, and until the teachers are vaccinated, we should not even be having a discussion about returning kids to school. We all want them back to school. We all want to return to normalcy, but we're just not ready yet. It's not, the country is not there, the state is not there, the city is not there. And we need to talk to the 52% of students whose families are opting into, into remote. That's by choice. That tells me that they don't feel safe, that they don't feel comfortable going back to school right now. So to tell them, no, no, we're going back to school, despite your concerns, that more than half of our student population, I'm just not comfortable with it. And I'll be voting no on this. I would urge my colleagues to do the same. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McCarthy, then Counselor Mahoney.
Thank you, President Liang. Yeah, I also saw this, and I've been on the other end of this a few times over the years, but the council has come forward with a resolution when we were on the school committee, and the school committee, along with the superintendent... along with the superintendent and the rest of administration have been in the thick of things. And when a resolution comes out like this, the public doesn't know all the ins and outs of what the school committee is doing or what the superintendent is proposing or the reentry task force or the plan to bring kids back. I'm all for what councillor Kane's saying here about getting back to normal. And I'm amazed private schools have done so well. And, you know, I know they're not as large as the city of Quincy's system, but they're still pretty large and they've done very, very well. A lot of people opted out of the public scene to go to the private scene to get that face-to-face education that I believe is hurting our students and I'm probably one of these guys that would have said I wanted the kids back in school months ago and got in all kinds of trouble. But I think councillor Kane's thoughts and I think everything here is met with the utmost positivity for the school system. But I'm a little concerned because I've been there before where all of a sudden it looks like the school committee is just gearing up. It looks like Superintendent Malvi is just gearing up a little bit when people see this because not all people pay attention to this. Like some of the folks in the city or the folks that are on this Zoom meeting tonight that live it all the time. And all of a sudden, they'll start doing a number on the school committee and on the superintendent and company. Yeah, it's about time somebody did something. Well, they've been doing something for the entire year of 2020 and now we're in 2021. And they have their plan. If you remember, Mr. Malvi was at the microphone with Governor Baker. And Quincy was the poster child for being proactive early on trying to figure out how to work hybrid and all the other solutions in there. So I'm I'm really torn. I, I know that councillor Kane is got his his thoughts here tonight with this motion, and they're all in a good way. I, I'm, I'm just, sometimes I know that as councillor Palmucci stated, it is in the school committee's realm. It is in their, in their ballpark. I spoke with the superintendent. He did not know this was on the agenda. And it's all good things to get back to normal. Councillor Palmucci makes some good points. Councillor Kane is chomping at the bit like the rest of us to get the kids back to normal because it is hurting them no matter what, how successful things are. I don't know what I'm going to vote on this right now, but I think councillor Kane's intentions were all in the good place. He wanted to make sure that we stayed on top of this and stayed aggressive and made it happen. Uh, but I think it is a school committee. Superintendent Malvi, task force, administration, you, whatever they're calling it this week. And they've been calling it something for the last 12 months. They've been working at it. I think it's in, in, in their best interest to carry the ball on this one. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Mahoney, then councillor Phelan. Councillor Mahoney?
Thank you very, thank you very much, Madam President. Um, I, I too, I was on the school committee and it, it, it feels a little disingenuous what we're asking. And, and highly unlikely, I mean, the, the QEA would have to, to make a, would have to come forward to say that they want all the teachers. And I don't know, and I'm sure if they could actually get all the teachers vaccinated, that would be fantastic if they could. But um, it's not our place on the council to, to set policy as councillor Palmucci said. He said a lot of things that I was going to say as well. I got a lot of emails from parents who are working citywide and who are working on their PTOs, who are working closely with their communities. And that's really how the, the schools are really a self-contained part of our city. And it's, it's operated and by the elected body of the school committee. And the mayor is the chairman and the superintendent is basically the person who has to make the decisions that are going forward. It's been a tough row for the schools. And I know we all are very passionate about our city and wanting our kids to get the best. I want our kids to get the best education that they can. And I believe they are underneath the circumstances that we are operating under. It's not perfect by no means. And I, I too, councillor McCarthy, I believe I'd be pushing for our kids to be back in school, but safely. Safely is the key. And, you know, we don't have a commissioner of health right now. And this is what I was alluding to when I was speaking to Mr. Walker earlier. This is a very tricky phase of the city Quincy that we're in right now where we're rolling out vaccinations and we're talking about bringing us in a resolve, talking about bringing our students back to to a classroom where we have made the recommendation that the students should be kept at six feet apart. To do that, we would have to change that recommendation and then we would be putting families at risk. The very thing that we're being asked to not do by the governor, by the president, we could go all the way. I mean, very often we're talked about, you know, we're local, we should be talking about what's happening local. And this is something that's being played up everywhere, you know, get our kids back to school, but safely, the key is safely. And we're not there yet here in Quincy. And I would recommend maybe watching a couple of school committee meetings because they just, just recently talked about this about bringing kids back to school, grades one to three. That's the phase. That's the first phase. And they're beginning to do that. Let's put it in the hands of the school committee because that is the proper place for it to be. Because we can certainly not make recommendations or allusions to grandeur of being able to say that we can, we can vaccinate all of the teachers. Unless Mr. Walker can tell me something different, I'm not sure if that's something that we can. But there's a certain rollout for those vaccinations. And that's the way, that's the way we have to work. So I won't be supporting this resolve. I do, I do believe it was put forward potentially with the with the interest that was best suited for our, our families here in Quincy. But I don't think it's our position here on the council to be doing that. So thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, councillor Phelan, then councillor Andronico. Councillor Phelan?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, just a comment, I'm going to go in and I'm going to agree with councillors Palmucci, Mahoney and McCarthy. I just don't think this is our role. Um, I've watched some of the school committee meetings. They're working very hard on the reentry task force, which is going to reopen it. This being my second time on the city, city council, I remember big fights that went on back in the eighties and nineties when the council stepped into things that we actually have no authority in. I understand councillor Kane's motives. It's pure. There isn't anyone around who wouldn't like to see kids back to school. I mean, I live just across the street from Beachwood North School. And I do see kids going in and out of the school and you know, there, so there is some hybrid learning and that going on now. But like councillor Palmucci said, 52% of the the parents in, in Quincy decided that they thought it was better to, to go remotely. I understand the things and I think we have to get there as soon as we can. But I would also move to say to the, to the governor, let's get the teachers, let's get them vaccinated in the classroom. They are as important a group as there is. And I'm hoping with vaccinations coming in and everything, we should. I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no, not because I, I think councillor Kane's motives are pure, but I, I just don't think it's, it's the role of the city council. So I will be voting no on this. Thank you, madam.
Thank you, councillor Phelan. Councillor Andronico?
Thank you, Madam President, and through you to the members. I certainly appreciate the thoughtfulness and time that councillor Kane has put into the drafting and crafting of this resolution. Now, I think that any reasonable person would absolutely agree with the underlying message, uh, which I read to be that students learn best when they're physically in a classroom and they're receiving live instruction. I don't think that's anything that any one of us would argue. Uh, but I also know that the superintendent, the administration and reopening task force, which is comprised of various QPS community stakeholders have been and continue to work diligently on finalizing plans to get our students back in the classroom full time. And even tonight, it could very possibly still be going on. The superintendent joined the citywide PTO meeting tonight to discuss this very matter. And as has already been mentioned, QPS recently announced plans to bring back some of our youngest students in grades one to three, uh, full time on February 22nd. And I know we're, we're all looking forward to that day. I, I did notice in councillor Kane's remarks that he repeatedly noted the importance of moving up educators into vaccination timeline so that we can actually get back to class safely. And, and personally, I believe educators should have been included in phase one alongside first responders, police and fire. Uh, but the state decided to go in, in a different direction, uh, I think to a larger society's detriment. And with that said, I can't really help but notice that the resolution doesn't call upon the state or the city to actually move up educators in the vaccination timeline. I also believe it's important to note that a former health commissioner, Ruth Jones, who was recently recognized by this body as a COVID-19 hero, was very adamant that six feet of distance be maintained at all times while in school buildings. And that to this day, that available space remains the number one hurdle Quincy Public Schools are facing to get our kids back in the, back in schools full time. So while I appreciate the intent and overall message of this resolution, I do have a concern, as has been mentioned, that, that the, what the precedent that passing this resolution would set. And although resolutions are non-binding, I, I don't believe that this particular issue falls under the purview of the city council. And, you know, our public school system has a set of duly elected officials that according to Massachusetts general law are tasked with establishing educational goals and policies for the schools in the district consistent with the requirements of law and the statewide goals and standards established by the Board of Education. And this includes approving plans put forth by the superintendent, the reopening task force to reenter schools safely, safely and responsibly amidst COVID-19. But I feel as though it would be improper for the council to formally comment on this particular issue. Just as I would find it improper for the school committee to comment on a department that's overseen by this council. And so that, for that reason in particular, I will not be voting in favor of the resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, CNN, so we have a motion to approve. Councillor DeBonan, I see your hand raised. Do you want to say something? Councillor DeBonan?
Yes, I could, if I could. Uh, thank you, Madam President. Just listening to all the members and myself being on the school committee prior to this as one of the five other colleagues that have served on the school committee, that have served on the council. You know, when it comes to, when it comes to the school committee and the city council, you know, our main concern here on the city council is that we approve funding. We approve the budget. Um, I wish we could add to the budget, but we can't. We can only approve it or we can decrease it. And then it gets moved over to the, to the school committee and they, they have the policy to basically divvy up the, any way they want with, with the funding that we give them. Same with the MSBA program when we're funding different capital improvement plans for each school. It has to come through the city council for the funding part of it. We basically, the funding part, we are yea or nay. And then it goes down to the school committee and gets dispersed that way. Um, and they set policy on, on a lot of these issues. I want to commend councillor Kane for bringing this forward, though. I will admit, I don't know if any other, I have, I have three children in Quincy Public Schools. And it's been horrendous this past year with them. And thank God that we have the Quincy Youth Hockey System where he can go to. But, you know, for him, I have kids on the special needs, you know, they, they get to go to school full time. And you're going to roll out a K through three system, I mean, or one through three system would allow the kids to come in, in segments. But I do agree with councillor Kane. But I do agree with, you have to give the parents the option for their children. If they want to continue to go remote, it's their option and it's their, it's their right if they don't feel comfortable with, with pushing kids back to school. However, there's the flip side of the coin where I think we do need to, to get kids back to school. And I agree with councillor Kane with, with that. Whether it be the remote based on the, 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 the parents, whether it be the hybrid model or, or whether full time, but we, we can't force kids to go, we can't force families and kids to go back to school. We have to give them that option. And so I do feel that we have to kind of push a little bit here. But unfortunately, that's in the policy of the school committee. And those are the elected members over there on that side that basically have been through step one. I don't mind this little bit of a push, though, from councillor Kane to, to kind of get, I, I mean, I don't know if, and I don't know if councillor Kane wants to speak on this, that we could maybe hold off on this tonight, hold off on this resolution? If there's anything that he would like to amend to the resolution that other councillors have spoke about? I mean, as, as a very similar to councillor McCarthy, I, I don't know where I'm going to go on this. I don't know how I feel comfortable because the sentiments in this resolution are good. I, I agree. They're very, very good, good comments and good suggestions. However, the school committee's based on their, it's their policy. And that's, that's where we have a school committee that is elected and we have a board, um, a committee that does and votes on this. And a superintendent works with and their staff works on this. I, I just want to see if there's anything that councillor Kane wants to rebuttal or maybe comment on anything on this. I mean, I through you, Madam President, to councillor Kane or any of the other councillors, how they, they would feel about if they want to come back to this, they want to make an amendment to it. I know it's non-binding, but it's, it's still something that's, you know, here tonight. So with that, can I, can I open it up to through you, Madam President, to councillor Kane if he has any comments on this?
Oh, that's fine, since you are directing it to him and it is his resolve. But I want to also just acknowledge that councillor Harris is in the queue to speak. So councillor Kane will
Yep.
No, if, if you want to ask him a question on his resolve, I think he should, you know, have the opportunity to respond. I just want to, again, acknowledge that we do have somebody in the queue. Councillor Kane, would you like to respond?
If I could, Madam President, I'd like to listen to councillor Harrison and if councillor Kane wants to chime in at any time.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, councillor DeBonan. I appreciate that. Councillor Harris, we'll go to you next.
I'm going to yield to if councillor Kane wants to speak and then I'll speak after.
Thank you. I appreciate all three of you working to keep the decorum. Councillor Kane?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I mean, I heard a number of doozies tonight about something that really is, you know, a, a positive expression of support for our students, our teachers and families. There was nowhere in that document any mention about transmission rates and I think paramount to most of the comments that I had earlier, uh, the thoughts were around safety and making sure that we can get people back into a situation that's safe for all parties involved. So, um, you know, everyone can talk themselves into a frenzy as, as is going on tonight. Uh, this isn't, you know, expunging any rules or it is just like every other resolution that comes before the body. Uh, there are expressions of, of interest, support, refute. In this case, it's support, as I said, for our teachers, students and families uh, to get back to some semblance. This isn't saying that uh, all students need to go back to school. This isn't saying that there won't be a hybrid option. I don't know. Because again, we don't, we, you know, as everyone said tonight, we don't set those policies. Uh, but to be making stuff up about what this doesn't say, I think is the disingenuous part. Um, you know, we, we see these resolutions before the council all the time for various different things. One I put forward recently was for National Grid, which we're going to have come to talk to the city council about why we're having blackouts. You know, National Grid doesn't report to us. They're a private entity that owns infrastructure and provides services for residents of the city. Um, in this case, the Quincy Public Schools, uh, uh, you know, while coming under the purview of the superintendent and policy body being the school committee, we do approve the budget every year, you know? So it's, it's something that I certainly consider in daily life. Our constituents are serviced by the schools and, and this is who this is in support of. So, uh, you know, everyone can, can take their positions as they will. I, I don't have any, uh, to answer councillor DeBonan's question, I don't have any uh, changes, amendments to be made. If, if anybody else has any changes, that's great. I, I don't intend to table this because it's, there's really just, it's a
that's great. I don't intend to table this because it's, there's really just, it's a very simple expression of support. This isn't, this wasn't meant to be a dramatic affair, but to express to the people that we serve that we're behind them. And yeah, of course, the Quincy Public Schools is on, of course, the superintendent is on it. But we can make whatever comments we want. That's our job. We work for the city. We work for the people. We can make comments about situations. And in this case, this is about support, because I want the people that I serve in Ward Three to know that I backed them, and that we're hoping to get them back to a place where their kids are back in school, or there's my, you know, I don't know what that is. We'll see what that is. But that's all that that is. So, I appreciate all the comments. I will be moving forward with this, and I will be voting yes, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kane. Counselor Harris?
Thank you, Madam President. And I want to thank Counselor Kane. When I first read it, read this, read the resolution, I thought about my day-to-day business that takes place and the number of people that I run into or work with on a daily basis. And there are, a lot of people work with me on a daily basis, as you know. And the struggles that I've seen these folks who have been working every day since this took place, having to deal with their children. In fact, at work, every so often, a phone will ring, and it'll be the City of Quincy announcing, it must have been one of the, one of the parents announcing that the Zoom is out, just to let the parents know their remote learning is not working at the time. So, for me, the resolution was, and it wasn't about, to me, I never even thought we were gonna, you know, upset members of the school committee, because we both, we both, both the school committee and the, us as city counselors, we both got into this to help people, to lift people up in bad times. And I believe that it was the intention of this resolution. I seconded the resolution, and I support the resolution. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Harris. Okay, so to my understanding, I believe we got everyone, but I just wanted to do a last check before we move to a vote. Okay, with that, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Andronico?
No.
Counselor Kane?
Yes.
Counselor DeBonan?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney?
No.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci?
No.
Counselor Phelan?
No.
President Liang?
Yes.
Five members.
Thank you. So, the item passes. Next, we're going to move on to the approval of previous meeting minutes, and this is from February 1st, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
Motion approved.
Thank you, Counselor Phelan. Second to bed, Counselor McCarthy. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Okay, the meeting minutes passed. Communications and reports from the mayor, other city officers, and city boards. Okay, seeing none. Unfinished business and proceeding meeting. Seeing none. Reports of committees. Counselor Mahoney?
Thank you very much, Madam President. We had a meeting earlier tonight in ordinance, and we had two resolves that I'd like to bring forward. Let's see, the ordinance committee, we could bring forward 2020-037, the ordinance amending Title II, Administration and Personnel, Chapter 2.14, Job Classifications and Advertising Employment and Bankings. There's positive recommendation from the ordinance committee, and I motion to approve.
Okay, so this is a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second to bed, Counselor Phelan. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Andronico?
Yes.
Counselor Kane?
Yes.
Counselor DeBonan?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci?
Yes.
Counselor Phelan?
Yes.
President Liang?
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you very much. And then moving on to 2020-051, ordinance amending Title V of the Business Licenses and Regulations, adding Section 5.06, Business Certificate Certificates. Positive recommendation from the ordinance committee, motion to approve.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second to bed, Counselor Phelan. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Andronico?
Yes.
Counselor Kane?
Yes.
Counselor DeBonan?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci?
Yes.
Counselor Phelan?
Yes.
President Liang?
Yes.
Nine members.
Madam Chair, was there anything else out of ordinance?
That'll be it for tonight.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Next, we also have a report out of Public Works Committee. Counselor Harris, I know that we were having a little bit of connectivity issues, so are you still connected? Are you able to speak on the item in Public Works?
Yes, about this evening, this evening, we had a public hearing. Madam Chair, I'm having some real, can you hear me? Can you folks hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Again, thank you for helping me with those earlier today. So, earlier, there was a public hearing on, I'm just pulling up the, okay, Grant of Locations, National Grid, Joyce Road, Connell Street, Quarry Street, and Furnace Brook Parkway. Would anybody wish to, because I'm not in favor of this, so I'm bringing it out, but I'm not making the motion to approve.
Understood, Counselor. I appreciate that. Is there anybody that would like to make a motion to approve on this item? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, if there's no motion to approve, does it remain in committee?
It does.
Okay, so it will remain in committee and will not pass this evening. Thank you so much, Counselor Harris. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Any other reports of committees? Okay, seeing none. Any presentations of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance? Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, President Liang. I know that the last meeting we had, and over the last month or so, we've had a lot of folks that have either been close to us and close to the city. And one gentleman, I don't think we spoke about last week, was Steve Desroche. I just want to mention Steve and bring this up real briefly. I know that he passed away on January 24th, 2021. And Steve, as a lot of us were familiar with Steve Desroche in zoning and planning, he owned his own company, the Ponson Valley Survey Associates, since 1987. He was very active in St. Mary's Church. He was a former president of Quincy Youth Hockey. He was a former member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Maria Dros Fashion Fundraiser, and he was also involved in the Quincy Rotary Club. I, Steve was a, he was a wonderful guy. He was a, a nice guy, a good guy. The writer here talks about him being a quintessential good guy, and his smile and positive attitude was contagious, and it really was. He, he died too soon, like a lot of folks are these days, and I just wanted to bring it up tonight. I felt that Steve's connection with the city over the years and his community involvement needed to be recognized. So, just keep them all in, all the families in the prayers and thoughts. It's been a tough go the past couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor. I really appreciate you mentioning that this evening. Counselor Kane?
I'm with Counselor McCarty. I feel like we're losing a bunch of people from a particular generation that they just don't make in the same way anymore. Unfortunately, this past weekend, we laid to rest a dear friend of mine, Kevin McCormick. And if you knew Kevin McCormick, when he was a, he was a Germantown guy, born in Dorchester, grew up in Germantown. He most recently lived in Norwell, but spent the majority of his life on Hatherley Road. I grew up from central middle school days with his daughter Meredith. We remain very good friends to this day, and his son Coleman, who he leaves behind, unfortunately. You know, another one that has, that lost battle to cancer. And you definitely have seen Kevin around. He was one of these guys that appreciated the game of politics and, you know, was a loyal supporter if he was with you. And he was in the bar business for 40 years. He came across every athlete and sort of celebrity that would come through town at his beanpot over near the Boston Garden, but was just such a special guy. He knew the value of relationships, and he knew the value of friendship and loyalty qualities that are very hard to come by these days, especially in politics. But as I said, he leaves behind his daughter Meredith and her husband Mike, their two girls, Vivian and Veronica, Coleman, his partner Stephanie, his wife Marcia, 45 years, and many family and friends along the way, but one of Quincy's own, unfortunately, we lost, and a dear friend at that.
Thank you so much, Counselor. Counselor Mahoney?
Thank you very much. I feel bad calling up after that. I just, I also just want to mention, Steve was just one of those people who, wherever you were, no matter who you were, he had a kind word for you, and he was always a smile and a very pleasant person. And he's gonna be sorely missed by the City of Quincy. And he was an incredible asset into Ward Four, into St. Mary's. And I was just heartbroken when I heard that he passed. Just as many people that we're learning about, it's getting harder and harder. It just seems like every day, we're just, we're just losing too many people that are so valuable here in the City of Quincy. So, but to change the subject, and I don't mean to do that as well, I did want to speak a little bit about the joint convention that's gonna be coming up in regards to the open seat on the school committee. I was very disappointed to hear that candidates are not gonna have an opportunity to speak to the joint convention. Historically, that has always been the case. I have been around for a bit. I was on the school committee for some time. In 2008, we had two joint conventions. Jim Timmons left to go work with the administration, whom he still works with the administration. At that time, there were three candidates that came, and a fourth person that came all spoke. Nick Pulio was the person who replaced Jim Timmons. In 2008, Kevin Mulvey left the school committee to take a position as the HR Director for the Quincy Public Schools. At that time, there were two candidates that came out and spoke before the joint convention. State Rep Mariano was the replacement at that time. In 2014, I might be wrong about that date. I think that was when Bill DeBonan was elected to the city council. Emily Lebo and several other people came out and spoke. Now, the difference here is that it is a pandemic, and I am well aware that we're in a pandemic. However, we did have a convention here, right here in the city council, where we were able to have candidates come out and speak, and we had some great candidates. That's the whole point of the process that we're having. We want to encourage people to run for office. And by doing this and not allowing people to come out and speak on behalf of that open seat, we're discouraging that very process. It might be the opportunity for the next school committee member may not be elected to the open seat, but may be in the next election cycle. So, it is, it is, we do have time, it could be advertised in the Quincy Sun this week, to allow people to know that this is going to be happening, and maybe some processes can be changed to have that happen. I do hope that we will be able to do that, because the way it was presented, or how I'm understanding it, there'll be nobody presented to us. There'll be nominations only from the floor, and we will not hear from the candidates. And as of today, I believe there were four. One withdrew, but there's still, there's still at least three viable people who would like to, who have reached out and have spoken to me about those open seats. So, thank you very much, Madam President, for allowing me to take them on, take the opportunity to speak. I do not do a disservice to the job that the school committee does. It's an elected board, and I appreciate all that they do, and I value the presence of all of them, and I value the people who want to come out and serve in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other petitions, memorials, or remonstrances? Okay, seeing none. Movements, orders, and resolutions? All right. With that, scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings. Counselor Mahoney, I believe you wanted to schedule a meeting from March 1st, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. If we could schedule a meeting from March 1st, we would need to have a public hearing, and it's regarding 2020-133, ordinance amending Chapter 375, special for the affordable housing, adding Section 7.1.14, definition of affordable housing. So, we'd need a public hearing that evening, followed by the public hearing. What I'm hoping to do is have a presentation from the planning department and an open dialogue for the council to be able to really discuss the affordable housing and how we move forward with the City of Quincy, with the developments that we do have happening here in the City of Quincy. So, thank you very much for letting me have that opportunity.
Thank you so much. And so, that'll be, again, March 1st at 6:30 PM, and then we'll go into the regularly scheduled council meeting. Any other scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings? Okay, with that, folks, I just want to remind people, six weeks in a row now, we're gonna be all together, Tuesday, February 16th at 6:30 PM. Over at the high school, we have the joint convention of what the city council, as well as the school committee, followed by the March 1st city council meeting. Before I grab a motion to adjourn, I just want to all wish everybody a happy Lunar New Year. It's this coming Friday, February 12th. It's going to be the Year of the Ox. I'm wearing my red for the new year. I can't celebrate with all of you in person. I know every single one of you always take advantage of coming out to celebrate with the community at our Lunar New Year Festival, which will take place virtually, unfortunately. But it's the Year of the Ox. It's all about rebuilding from a very awful year, which was the Year of the Rat, right? Seems really appropriate. But really, it's just, you know, Lunar New Year is so, so special and dear to my heart, about really restarting and spending time and appreciating family and loved ones, and making sure to challenge yourself to go into the new year, to find prosperity and happiness and good health. And so, I charge that to all of my colleagues, to everyone in the city council office, everyone from the mayor's office, all of you. It's been a really insane year, and I really do, from the bottom of my heart, wish you each a super, super good, happy Lunar New Year. So, that's all. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
Thank you so much. Good night, everybody. Be safe.